Well, committee of the whole meeting. These are discussion items today. This is officially a re-imagined meeting, but we also have a few, as you can see, we've had a few areas of business today, which is appropriate for the first meeting with new board members. But this one is really perhaps the most important thing we'll bring to you in the next few months. And this is a presentation on resetting cut scores on MEAT and MME to be consistent with college and career readiness. This presentation, I should tell you that the urgency of this, and it's one thing in the clip, we're going to incorporate part of this clip in a podcast today, and part of it is to say that we've used the word urgent for a long time, but it really is urgent now. All the children of our state, I would say especially kids who are in rural and urban poverty, need the best efforts of this board and our department in order to help them reach the level of proficiency. The thing that we're going to demonstrate, I think, with our presentation today led by Joseph, is that, as you know, five years ago, we purposely had cut scores at pretty much what's called a basic level. And that was done because the grade level content expectations hadn't kicked in yet, the course content expectations, and the first class from what the board led the charge on high school graduation requirements hadn't graduated yet. So with all of those things together, and at a point in time when we really want to have a realistic view of what proficiency is, to make it in this world of today, either to go right out into a college environment or a career right away, what you'll see, and I think we've prepared pretty well, is a demonstration of how that can happen. And I would just say one thing procedurally. Because of the urgency, this is one that I kind of inferred last month, that we didn't have a referent group on. One of the things I found myself thinking back on is I've been a superintendent in a couple of other places, and this is the only place that I've never actually been able to bring in our specific recommendation. Because more often than not, at least on major issues like this, we've worked with referent groups, and often there's two or three issues in that that maybe we wouldn't recommend to you. So what we've decided to do today, at least for presentation purposes, and action wouldn't be till next month, but is to say, this is our clearest thinking as a department. And I met with the Ed Alliance yesterday because I wanted to make sure they understood they still have a tremendous opportunity, number one, to respond to us in-house based on this presentation between now and next month. You know, maybe there are some modifications that are in order. They certainly have and are encouraged to speak at this board meeting, the next board meeting, whatever's appropriate, contact board members. I mean, this is democracy in action. But we decided that we owe you our best recommendation, and then this is one of those areas, and a very important area, where it's a board decision ultimately. So that's the spirit of this today. It doesn't cut off anyone's opportunity to bring other perspectives to the table, and we would encourage that. So with that, as a starting point, I got a chance to preview this. We worked on this Friday and a little bit yesterday with Joseph, and I think we've got a pretty relatively succinct presentation for you and our audience that'll kind of paint this picture. If Joseph and Sally could join us at the table.
Can I just ask a quick question? So as we're kind of changing how we bring these things forward, is there an idea that they will go out for public comment, or that somehow other groups will be able to share information back? Is there a manner to do that?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I meant to communicate a moment ago. I mean, right now, this happens on other items, too. I shouldn't, I probably overstated that to say we've never brought, we bring recommendations to you every meeting that don't have referent groups, but typically something of this magnitude we might. It would be probably a year in the making. It would be one of those things that we don't know how to staff anymore to do it appropriately. So the idea behind it is that, yes, we would, that's what I meant by encouraging. So I see some of the associations here that'll have views on that. There'll be individuals with views. I would assume they're going to, especially based on my encouragement yesterday at the Ed Alliance, they're going to either directly communicate with us about some pros and cons to that, possible amendments, before we bring it back to the board for action.
I'm sorry. What I was asking is, in what manner would that happen? I meant, is there a formalized structure in which that would happen, or would it just happen?
It would be at a board meeting. They would, as they, look at my SAS, for instance, people came in and testified at a board meeting with what they thought were issues that needed to be considered differently by the board. And that's what we would encourage, you know, that before a vote were to be taken, that they would express those concerns and views. And let's say some of those came up next month that, you know, were for the board to consider, and let's even after the presentation maybe see if you're comfortable with that. So Sally, please.
Okay. As Mike said, a number of years ago, in 2006, in the spring of 2006, the pilot for the MME was conducted along with the MEAT high school test. And at that point in November, after the pilot, the board had made the decision on how to set the cut scores for the MME. And at that point, it was decided by the board that you would make them equal in difficulty to the MEAT high school test. And there were a lot of reasons for that, some of which Mike mentioned, is that the students had not yet had the opportunity to go through the high school content expectations and to really go through the coursework that was required for high school graduation. That has happened now, and those cohorts have gone through that. And at that point in 2006, the board did ask the staff to come back for an opportunity for the board to take a look at those cut scores, so that they would really begin to reflect college and career readiness. As Mike mentioned, where we were with the timing, it seemed more appropriate to define proficiency as a basic. As you know, you have adopted the college and career ready standards along with 39 other states, and so we will be moving along that trajectory. So Joseph's got a PowerPoint together to walk you through what some of the issues are that you'll want to consider as you start to have the discussion today. So I'm going to turn over to Joseph, and I think you also worked very diligently with some of your staff, if you'd like to introduce them.
Yes, I've, in doing this, I've had an opportunity to work very closely with a lot of my staff, so I won't be able to recognize all of them, but many of my staff participated in this. I did want to recognize three. Steve VJ, who heads the measurement research and psychometrics unit, Vince Dean, who is our manager of all of our assessment programs, and Vanessa Kiesler, who is the manager of evaluation research and accountability. Very closely worked together on not only the policy issues surrounding this, what needs to be discussed, but doing some of the studies that we've done in this, for this presentation. So just again, background, in November 2006, the Michigan State Board of Education did take up a board item, and we presented four options for the Michigan merit examination cut scores. We presented an option of cut scores that were recommended by the standard setting panel, and those were less rigorous than the MEAT high school test across the board. Cut scores that were equivalent in difficulty to the MEAT high school test, cut scores that were equivalent in difficulty to the ACT college readiness benchmarks, which are more rigorous than the MEAT high school test cut scores were, and we came with also a fourth, which was cut scores halfway between options two and three as a compromise. The State Board of Education adopted option two, which was cut scores equivalent in difficulty to the MEAT high school test cut scores. Board members did then, at that point, request formally, in the minutes, revisiting the cut scores to raise them to college readiness in future years. And there were specific things mentioned, such as maturation of the GLCEs, the high school content expectations, the Michigan merit curriculum, and an estimate of approximately five years would be appropriate while we're about there, just to give some history. So current status, we do have four cohorts of high school students who have now taken the MME. The first cohort of students who are required to complete all Michigan merit curriculum requirements took the MME in spring 2010 and will graduate this year. The high school content expectations have been in place for four years now, the grade level content expectations for six years, and the State Board has adopted the Common Core State Standards, college and career readiness standards. And so those are based on college and career readiness in high school and on being on track to becoming college and career ready in the lower grades. Again, current status, the current cut scores, again, are based on skills sufficient to succeed in an old manufacturing economy. They're basic skills. The new economy that we've heard quite a bit about today does mean that cut score should reflect preparedness for college and career in high school and being on track to achieve that in high school, in elementary and middle school. Why do we think college ready is an important thing? If you look at the median annual earnings by educational attainment, you can see that it makes a big difference. In particular, a bachelor's degree provides a significant bump over a high school degree and over an associate's degree. So a bachelor's degree is a pretty significant piece that students will need in order to be able to compete economically. Also, if you look at the graduation rates by country in the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, essentially develop the major developed countries, you do see that the United States in 1995 was ranked number two among all OECD countries, and in 2006 were ranked number 14. And they were below average. So we're essentially seeing a significant drop in our country in the ranking for having college degrees. In 2010, the situation is likely worse. We have continued to see this trend over time. If you, again, look at the percent of adults with bachelor's degree or higher by state, you can see that in 2004, Michigan was ranked number 33 among the 50 states plus DC, which was again below the national average. As Mike says, this is an urgent situation in Michigan. We no longer have a manufacturing, a wide base of manufacturing economy where we can sustain having this type of college bachelor's degree holding population and still maintain economic competitiveness. A little bit more background, Michigan has been on a trajectory over the last six years, seven years, in moving toward college and career readiness performance expectation. The first step really was increased rigor of content expectations. So the grade level content expectations did represent a significant increase in the rigor of what we expected students to know and do in terms of the content. The high school content expectations also represented a significant increase in rigor. Step two really was increased rigor of student course-taking expectations. The Michigan merit curriculum was a major step forward for Michigan. And again, this is focused on content, the content that students are supposed to learn. Then we can talk about the college and career as a focus of content expectations. K-12 college and career readiness standards in 2010, adopted by the board, and focus of the test content on college and career. In 2007, we adopted the Michigan merit examination, which does have work skills examination as a part of it, and the ACT, which is a college entrance examination as a part of it. And all grades will have that same kind of focus when we move to the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium assessments. The last step really is, because everything else has been focused on the content, the content that students are supposed to learn, the content that is on the test, the last step in that trajectory is college and career ready performance expectations. And that's a really different thing than college and career ready content expectations. So it is talking about college and career ready cut scores in high school and cut scores that represent being on track for that in elementary and middle school. So we did a preliminary study of what the cut scores would be if we adopted college and career ready cut scores. And first, the first step in that is defining college and career readiness. We define college readiness as being ready to succeed in first semester credit-bearing college courses without remediation. We define career readiness as being ready to succeed in introductory technical career training courses without remediation. And one of the questions is, why without remediation? That's actually a really important piece of this, because 70% of Michigan students who matriculate in community colleges in Michigan take remedial courses when they come out of high school. And we know that college students who take remedial courses rather than credit-bearing courses are more likely to drop out, and in fact, in a study that was done in New York State, they were two times more likely to drop out if they had taken just one remedial So we went ahead and identified college ready scores. So we looked at reading and mathematics only, and the reason we looked at reading and mathematics only for this kind of preliminary study is that they are the AYP subjects, so the ones that have the biggest impact. AYP subjects and persistently lowest achieving subjects. So, that sounded funny. The subjects that we use in persistently lowest achieving calculations.
We knew it would be that.
Yes. These are based on the ACT college ready benchmarks, which are a 21 in reading and a 22 in mathematics. And we did look at the percentage of Michigan 11th grade public school students who met the ACT college ready benchmarks in spring 2010. We had 38% met those benchmarks in reading, whereas we had 65% considered proficient on the MME. So again, it tells us that our proficient cut scores do not represent college readiness. 30% in mathematics, whereas we had 50% proficient on the MME. So what about career readiness? Right now, the National Assessment Governing Board is doing a study to identify what career readiness means, and it is really a strong methodology. We've taken a look at some of that methodology, and we, as a Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium, do intend to use that methodology to identify what career readiness means. And we're going to wait for that because we don't want to reinvent that wheel, and it's being done very well by NAGBE.
And just as a reminder, Michigan is one of the states that's in the consortium. When the college and career ready standards were put out for adoption by the states, the states really rallied around two different consortia for assessments. And so when Joseph is saying the Smarter Balanced Assessment, that's a consortium that Michigan decided to join as we start to develop the assessments that will then be aligned with the new college and career ready standards. So some of that's for the audience that may not be as accustomed to hearing the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium.
Thank you. So at this point, we are limiting the current discussion to college readiness. So the basic strategy that we used was we started with ACT college readiness benchmarks. This is a really good starting point. The methodology really looks at what ACT cut score, what ACT score do you have to have to have a 50% probability or better of receiving a B or better in your first credit-bearing course in the related subject? So for English, it's composition 101. For reading, it's typically a social science course. For mathematics, it's typically college algebra 101, and so on. So it's a good starting point. We will need to refine the study, however, so we would be coming back with a refined study that actually looks at having what score on the MME. And the reason for doing that is, one, to get a Michigan-specific study, how does this work in Michigan institutions, and we will be working with ACT to do that study. What will we need, what kind of score on the MME is needed? And one of the reasons also to go with the MME is that the MME is better aligned with the full Common Core or the full college and career-ready content standards than is the ACT alone. So it will provide us some additional refinement, but for right now, it is what we have, and it really is a good starting point. So taking the ACT college readiness benchmarks, we worked backward toward grade three, so matching students from the current grade to previous grade. So we first looked at grade 11, then we took the same students who took the test in grade eight, matched those students, found an approximately equal, a cut score with approximately equal rigor across all grade levels as we moved backwards in grades. So this is what we have as the results of our preliminary cut score study. As you may recall, or maybe not, our cut scores in the reading is X times 100 for grade X. So 300 for grade three, 400 for grade four, and so on, to 1100 for grade 11. If you look at the projected cut scores, if we back into it from the ACT college ready benchmarks, they are significantly higher. And in fact, if you are versed at all in what standard deviations are, you can see this and say, yes, they are indeed significantly higher, between .35 and 1.64, full standard deviations, higher than we currently have them. Those are indeed significantly higher than our current cut scores. If we look at the results in terms of the impact on mathematics, you can see I've got three bars for each grade. The orange bars are the percent proficient that we had in 2005, '06, the fall 2005 MEAT, or the 2006, '07 MME in grade 11. The yellow bars are the actual percentages in 2009, fall 2009, or spring 2010 for MME. And the blue is the projected percentages for 2009 if we use these college-ready cut scores. So you can see, one, a couple of things to see from this graph. One is, we saw some significant improvement in mathematics from grade, from 2005 to 2010. Educators responded to the increased rigor of the content standards. Now, we would be asking them to respond to the increased rigor of the performance expectations. And we did see this. So what we see is there would be a significant dip in the percent proficient across the state, but we anticipate that that would be a temporary dip. It may take some time to get back to where we are currently, but we believe that Michigan educators will respond and will be able to get there. The same kind of thing you can see is happening in reading. Again, we've seen some significant improvements from 2005 to 2010, not quite as big in reading as it was in mathematics, and again, a significant drop if we were to go with college and career ready cut scores. And again, it would be, rather than asking for educators simply to respond to increased rigor in the content standards, the content expectations, we would be asking educators to respond to increased rigor in the cut scores. We also ran a preliminary impact study on AYP. So we reran AYP for 2009, '10 school year with the new cut scores. We used the 2011 and '12 year, school year, high school threshold targets for AYP, which were 86% proficient for reading and 78% proficient for math.
Do you want to explain that a little bit more?
Yes.
With leading up to 2014.
Yes, yes. So they are higher than they, the 2011 school year thresholds are higher than the current year because we're leading to 100% in 2014. That's by law under No Child Left Behind. And a couple of questions here. Why did we use the 2009, '10 data with new cut scores? Because that's the most recent data we have. And why did we use the 2011, '12 thresholds? Because that's really the soonest that new cut scores could be in place. So this provides us a reasonable estimate of the impact. If achievement were not to improve significantly from here to 2011, '12, we were to have essentially the same achievement, then this would be the impact. So the impact is that 66% of schools would not make AYP. Right now, we have 86% of schools making AYP. Under college, approximate college-ready cut scores, we would have approximately 34% of schools making AYP. So it is a quite significant impact on the AYP rates across the state. The impact on my SAS as well, because of the connection of AYP to my SAS, and because a minimum of 5% of schools would be unaccredited, this would give us a maximum of 34% of schools that would be fully accredited, and approximately 61% of schools would be interim accredited. So again, that would have a significant impact on the results of my SAS as well because of the connection of AYP to my SAS. So the superintendent's recommendation is that we go ahead and increase cut scores for the 2011, '12 school year based on a refined study that we'll be able to do in this next spring. We will get the first set of data from our public universities and community colleges that will allow us to connect individual student MME scores to individual student success in first credit-bearing college courses, freshman, first freshman credit-bearing college courses. So we will be able to have that refined study about midway through this year. And why, the answer to that is, the State Board of Education policies that have been adopted over the last six years really have led us step by step to this point. This is kind of the last step in that process. We believe the time is right. The grade level content expectations, high school content expectations, Michigan merit curriculum have been fully implemented. We need to recognize that we are living in a new economy that was not the case just three or four years ago, even. We really need to change the focus of K-12 education to preparing students for success in college and our career technical training. And we have new assessments coming that will be, in 2014, that will be based on the Common Core of College and Career Ready Standards. And again, 2011, '12 is the earliest that new cut scores can be implemented. So that is the presentation, and Mike?
For here, let me just, before opening for discussion, clarifying questions, comments, is if the board was to accept my recommendation to go to these cut scores, which would be effective for 11, '12, at that time, so I'd want you to understand, this would be, it's not technically part of the recommendation today, but I'd want to be upfront about this. I would be recommending, if you were to do that, that we reconsider whether or not AYP is actually in my SAS. Because the catch-22 you can see is by doing what I, we wouldn't be recommending this to you if we didn't think it was the right thing. By doing the right thing in order to move up proficiency, and frankly, everyone pretty much is going to come down to a realistic view. It's not like your neighbor's not going to be impacted by this. But I would say to you that if you were to do that, I need to get on the table, that then my recommendation would be that we have to take AYP out of my SAS. Otherwise, we've unduly, kind of, that unaccredited and interim accredited word is something. I do think we would have some ideas about how to still get at some subgroups. I think there's ways to do that, but in effect, I think the AYP thing would be devastating at that point. So we'll open up the question. Cassandra, Nancy, John?
First of all, I appreciate you saying that.
Mary Ann.
I appreciate your comment about the AYP issue, and I also want to say that I think this makes complete sense, that we need to be more aligned with our assessments and expectations and have these high accountability and expectations for students so that they can be successful when they move outside of the high school realm. I had one clarifying question. When it says impact on my SAS, it says a maximum of 34% of schools would be accredited. Is that would be or could be?
Could be.
Okay.
But a maximum of, yes, a maximum of 34% of schools could be accredited.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And just for clarifying, your clarifying comment, that's why I would recommend that we'd have to get AYP out of my SAS for this, until, at least at this point. Otherwise, you'd have, when you add the interim and the unaccredited together, it's 60-some percent, isn't it?
66.
66.
66 would be interim.
Approximately 66, we would anticipate.
Yeah. So, but again, then I think we would look to other ways that we might identify subgroup issues that was, I think, the proper target of trying to do AYP within that. But, you know, so there's a little bit of a chicken and an egg thing here. Is that the right, yeah, chicken and egg. But, you know, the more we've talked about this in-house, this fits nicely with, I was here in 2006, I thought the board made the right decision at that time to do the cut scores then, give everyone a chance to kind of catch up. You can see progress has been made. But we also don't want to be, if I can be blunt about this, we don't want to be embarrassed in 2014 when this becomes evident to everyone else that we're maybe the only state that hasn't done this, and we, and I think the headlines would be, if I may be this blunt, that, you know, we've been kind of living a lie in Michigan and we haven't really adjusted. So the idea behind this is, let's get ahead of that. Schools would have new targets. We'd be in a position where I think by '14, when this other stuff kicks in, particularly the new assessments and at that point, we're going to have our folks more realistic. And one final thing is, I, for at least three years now, in my own kind of work at speeches at associations in all of Illinois, postponed almost all of those this year. I don't think I'm doing any of them, given our, but we'll find other ways to communicate. But have said, ladies and gentlemen, look at the college ready scores. Go to our, and see college ready, because you can see that one slide really jumped out, whether it was NAGBE, NAEP, or whether it was the college ready, there's this very different situation when it comes to what's really proficient. I think Nancy was next, and then John, and then Eileen?
First of all, I want to
Mary Ann. No, I'm sorry, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you very much for you and your team's very clear, hard work in putting this together. It's something that I've been looking forward to for a number of years. I knew we had to get there, as I think we all did. And so I appreciate the fact that we're now wrestling with this very, very difficult decision, but something that's very essential for our children, to not live the lie. I think it would be very harmful and very untruthful and very unfair to look at our children, our parents, our communities, our teachers, and say, yep, look at those scores, you're doing great, and then go out there in the real world and find out, hmm, not so much. I think that would be very difficult. So I'm very pleased about that. One of the questions I have is about the last comment you made, about then trying to take AYP out of, or not trying, but recommending, taking AYP out of my SAS. Given our current situation with Michigan, or Michigan, with the Elementary and Secondary Education Act not having gone through reauthorization yet, AYP is part of what's going on. And one of the challenges we faced in the past was not having our accreditation process match that process that was prescribed match that process that was prescribed in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. If that's still the case, how will we meet those needs in the, or, and maybe I'm ahead of myself, but I guess I'm a little concerned about getting in that same quandary again and putting ourselves at risk for federal funding. So I think that that's something that we need to at least hear best thinking on at this point, even though it's preliminary.
We have thought a little bit, please, Joseph.
Yeah, a couple of comments. One, there is no requirement for the, for AYP to be a part of the state accreditation system, but we, we did hear very clearly that for the, the important, the real important piece is subgroups. We cannot stop paying attention to subgroups. And one of the things that we thought we could do is, in the ranking methodology for my SAS, in the methodology where we combine together the improvement and the achievement levels of the students in the schools, you also simply take the difference between the highest achieving subgroup and the lowest achieving subgroup defined by No Child Left Behind, and include that. And so if you have a really large achievement gap within your school, it could really significantly impact how well you do on your my SAS report. So that, and in fact, one of the things that we thought was nice about that is that actually puts a sharper focus on subgroups than is currently in AYP. That really says you cannot have this kind of achievement gap without really having your ranking, your accreditation affected. And it, it really would put a sharper focus on subgroups than we currently have even under No Child Left Behind.
Do you see any other concerns within the sixty ways to lose your AYP? Sorry, had to use a little acupressure there. Are there any of those other key elements that you think that the feds would look at that would make a difference other than subgroups?
I don't think so at this point, because we do have the attendance rates, we do have the graduation rates and so on. So we have all the elements that are considered in AYP, in my SAS. And one of the nice things actually about the approach that we had just talked about is that instead of up to nine subgroups, you're essentially having one calculation, and it's essentially says you've got to take care of your lowest achieving subgroup, and, and as that goes up, then the next one needs to go up, and as that goes up, the next one needs to go up. So, so you really do address the issues of all the subgroups, it's just as one moves up, you have another one becomes your lowest achieving and so on.
Sure. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I'm pleased to hear that.
Thanks, Nancy. John, and then Mary Ann.
I guess I want to put aside the AYP question for the moment, but flag, you know, there's obviously a big issue there about whether we can continue to not have parallel systems and appreciate the virtues of insisting on performing for all the subgroups, et cetera. But I'm more concerned, one, I, I think the target is right, the general target of we have to believe and then make real that young people can leave high school with the proficiencies that don't require remediation. That's the high learning expectation that we know increases their chances that they will get it, that they will graduate, and that they will succeed in their next step. I think when we did the Cherry Commission, you know, we were looking at this fact clearly, two-thirds of our students need remediation at community college who graduate from our high schools, and they're more likely to fall by the wayside and drop out of post-secondary. And I think any of those numbers you put on, you can double them. I think in the Cherry Commission, we found if you're African-American or minority or poor, you're going to be twice as, falling out of the system at twice the rates. So I think the target is right. My, my question is, I'm getting a little lost, and I'll certainly ask Eileen Weiser, who knows more about this topic. As we set that target, what, what proficiency bar or assessment bar are we trying to hit that is the right proxy for not needing remediation? Is it, is it NAEP? Is it the ACT? Is it what's being cooked up in one or both of the Common Core, you know, standard-setting assessments? Getting that proficiency target right, to me, is the central question here. And I'm not sure which path we're on and whether they're, we're on the, I want to make sure we're on the right path, or what are alternate paths that people are looking at and saying, here's the target for proficiency. We're modeling off of ACT, or what NAGB is doing, or what, you know, is coming out of the balance, New Balance Assessment, or any of these, you know, I, I'm confused on how we're deciding what that proficiency bar is.
Good question. Joseph, please.
So, so, inside joke, sorry. I always start my sentences that way.
Well, yesterday I did a little imitation of Joseph, and he was very good about it.
So, the, the idea is, current methods of setting standards, you typically have what is called a performance level descriptor. It is a, it is a paragraph, a short paragraph that describes what a student should be able to do if they are to be considered proficient. That's what it does. And then you have teachers and other stakeholders come in and judge the performance of students on the test according to that performance level descriptor. There's a significant amount of subjectivity in that. It is wrapped around with as much psychometrics as possible to reduce that subjectivity, but it can't not be getting, it cannot be entirely gotten rid of. The idea behind this is that you have an external criterion against which you compare the standards. And the, the external criterion being, did they achieve success in their first credit-bearing college course? And that is, in fact, a pretty high bar, and it is something that is externally verifiable. You can say, I did have the students who went to the community colleges, say, in the state of Michigan, if the student hit, say, an eleven thirteen on the MME in reading, they had a fifty percent chance of getting a B or better. You can, you can actually say that with certainty. So the nice thing about doing this is it removes that subjectivity from, from the standard-setting procedure, and it makes the standards externally verifiable. And so the, the answer, the answer to the question is, we believe that this method of external verification against success in college is a very strong methodology for identifying a standard that can not only give you the benefit of being externally verifiable, but gives you the benefit of having a really strong policy basis. This is what we need students to be able to do in order to succeed. So for us, that is the way, that is why we believe that this, this method of external verification against success in post-secondary education would be something that we would think is a, is a strong methodology.
And which of these groups or standards linked to assessments is pitched that way?
That is, that is, well, ACT's methodology did that, based on the ACT scale. The Common Core assessments for both the Smarter Balance and the PARC will use that methodology. So all three of those would do that. NAEP is actually working on a study to do something very similar. The NAEP cut scores have not been set based on that methodology, but they're actually looking at that, that kind of methodology as well. They've set it in a different manner. It's, it's more, more of a traditional. But the NAEP cut scores were set based on what we hope that we can get students to be able to do. It, it's an aspirational, rigorous set of cut scores.
It is rigorous, and it's not so much aspirational, it's based upon developmental studies, that children are capable of doing that work at that time. So, and I have, when it gets to me, boy, I'm trying to figure out how little I can give you so you won't glaze over, but.
So the last question, are those, are these various efforts using similar methodology, are they all converging, or are they at wildly different places that they're then setting the, the proficiency bar?
They, we anticipate that they would be convergent. We do not anticipate that we would have significantly different things, significantly different cut scores with this refined study that's Michigan-specific and so on than what we have with ACT. We anticipate that they would be convergent. There may be some differences.
Mary Ann's on the phone was next, and then it was Eileen, and then Kath.
Thank you. And, thank you, Joseph. I'm, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thanks, because I've had a little trouble hearing, hearing you, so forgive me if I'm asking a question you already answered. When we're looking at the actual scores that you've recommended, Joseph, I am wondering, are those actual suggested scores that have been dictated by No Child Left Behind, or the FDA, whatever we want to call it?
I'm not clear whether you're talking about the new projected cut scores.
I'm talking about the, the scores you, you are suggesting. The three-point-five, I believe, and I didn't get the second, or the higher range of, of score that you said one point something, I didn't hear.
Right. The, the, so you're talking about the scores, the projected cut scores that would be increased to represent college and career readiness. Those are not mandated, mandated by No Child Left Behind. That is something that we have been asked to come back to this board, and we're coming back in approximately the five years that was added, to, to present what would we do if we were to raise the cut scores to college and career readiness?
Okay, so that is, that you're suggesting a strictly Michigan projection here?
Yes, particularly until we get to the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium assessments in 2014. Again, Mike talks about the urgency of this, you know, not being the last state that adopts college and career-ready cut scores. That would happen in 2014.
You know, to that point, and, and Eileen's next, but you probably all run into this. I run into this from parents, I run into it from my daughter who's a teacher, that I thought my child was proficient, and they got to college and they didn't make it. And, and, you know, and you start to realize, of course, it's because we've done the right thing up till now, which is let some of these other things kick in, but the bottom line is, we don't want young people believing that they're proficient in a given area when they're really not. And so I, this is, I'm trying to put this also in the terms we might hear as individuals, you know, that's, that's the lingo I'm hearing and what kind of motivates some of this. Mary Ann, is that good for now?
It is. It, it clarifies a lot for me. And I have, just one other follow-up on that. You said you would be, Joseph, clarifying this with HDP. And so are we looking at more of a unified set of scores with other states?
Right now, what we're looking at is, we're looking at working with ACT to identify the Michigan-specific cut scores based on the MME, rather than based solely on the ACT. And of course, there's a reminder that the ACT is a part of the MME. So it, for, for that reason, we think it, it is, one of those, that's one of the reasons we think it would be quite similar. What we would be talking about is a common set of cut scores with other states in 2014 when we adopt the Smarter Balanced Assessments.
Good. Thank you. Eileen, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Eileen, then Kath, and Nancy.
Well, this has been inadvertently my world for the last seven years, so, off and on. So I wanted to say a couple of things. One is, I have some, I have some documents with me that may help board members just to take a quick look to understand. We've, when I was on the board before and we set these cut scores, we had a lot of criticism for how low they were, but we did it for a reason. And that was that we needed a starting point for discussion, we back-end loaded the achievement, and we're there now, we just have to move forward on it. But among other things, I've got a 2005-2007 study for, excuse me, mapping state proficiency standards onto NAEP scales for the years 2005-2007. Michigan, at that point, in fourth grade math, was forty-fifth in the country out of forty-eighth. We were thirty-sixth lowest in the state, or the country, out of forty-eighth on eighth grade reading standards. The good news is that while we're fairly far below, and I have the statistics due for math, while we're fairly far below in fourth grade for our proficient as rated against the NAEP basic, we're below NAEP basic in those two subjects in fourth grade, substantially below. Our proficient is below what other states have for NAEP basic. So I, the good news is that we're much closer for our proficient in NAEP basic in eighth grade. So we, you know, there was, when you folks tried to come up with this, I can see how the thinking worked, and it's not as difficult on face value as it would be if we had not gotten to those scores in eighth grade. The question now is, what's going to prepare a kid for college? So in addition to this study, I have something called the Accountability Illusion, which actually gives Michigan some fairly high marks for our AYP situation. But this is a Ford study that has, it's way too long, see this, it's horrible. I slept it in just to say, gee, I downloaded it in color. But I have about a ten-page summary that gives a good executive overview. What they did is that they rated twenty-six, they took, they studied twenty-six states, and they took eighteen elementary and eighteen middle schools, and plucked them out of where they were, and then put them into another state to see how those schools would fare, whether they passed AYP or not. And there's actually a very good discussion about the complexities of Michigan's situation. The one thing that they commented on was that we have an unusually high number of middle schools, but that's related to the cut scores. So I think that some of those issues, as you develop them, that this, this, the synopsis may help the board understand what discussions you're going to have to face as staff to complement the cut score movement. And then the other thing they wanted to comment on is, I don't know how many of you get email from Education Trust, but they just did a study on, on the ability of minorities to enlist in the military. And in Michigan, it's pretty low. It's very difficult. And since that, not only is our nation's defense, but also an ability to provide an alternative career path for people who do their stint in the military, come out and go on with their lives, it's, it's very difficult to note that and to see that that's a good situation for Michigan. Everybody's been talking about the fact that this is going to happen anyway when the Common Core assessment's kicking in 2014. To me, this is a humane effort to talk to schools and to say, it's coming. Please, in this time of budgetary constraints and limits on people's, I wouldn't say imaginations, but on their ability to envision what has to happen, this is such a good moment for people to be taking those limited budget dollars and having very gutsy discussions on what actually works for children. And it's important that we, that we do it right now. I wanted to comment on the NAEP High School Achievement Commission, of which I am a member. It's chaired by Governor Ronnie Musgrove. I'd love to have him come and talk to us, because not only is he very bright and wonderful, but he's one of the most engaging and humorous men I've ever met. But on this issue, nobody's funny, because the National Assessment Governing Board and NCES have been spending the last five years doing both research and alignment studies on every major national test, from work keys to ACT, SAT. And what we've been doing is trying to figure out what measurements are valid on the National Assessment Governing Board's 12th grade NAEP to indicate preparedness by graduates for enlisting in the military, for entering a two- or four-year college training program, or for going to work without academic remediation. And we expect that those results will be out in the next eighteen to twenty-four months. We don't know.
When will they be out?
Sorry?
When will they be out?
Eighteen to twenty-four months, which is why the commission has kicked in the gear and is trying to explain it to people. We, we don't really know whether there's going to be convergence, or whether you're going to look at the NAEP scale and say, okay, great, two-hundred-and-twenty indicates that you can go to University of Michigan, one-hundred-and-eighty says that you could become a plumber, you know, a one-seventy-six says that you can go into the military. But what we're really focusing on is what, with the amount of money and lives wasted with kids entering college and failing, and dreams being crushed, and economies faltering, what score could there be that would help people understand that this is your goal? John, your question was extraordinarily perceptive, because California just came to the commission and said, you don't know how much we need this. We have kids who are graduating from high school, having passed the state test, who then go to community colleges, and seventy to eighty percent of them are in academic remediation. How can that be? So with luck, we'll have some indication back. It's a very complex process, and I'm awfully glad that I'm just observing it and talking about it as opposed to trying to do something with it. I'm not sure what else I could say to this, except that I appreciate the courage that it's taken to start the discussion, and I know it's inevitable, because you don't want to blindside these districts in four or five years when the Common Core assessments come out. It would, it would be a tragedy, because people are, in this moment in time, rethinking education, trying to reinvent it. So the moment is ripe. The only thing that I would add, just because we haven't had a chance to talk, is that the architects of the Common Core curriculum are mentioning that it's important also to look at items on the test in transition, to make sure that for elementary school grades, we have enough arithmetic to reflect what's in the Common Core, and I don't know whether that's an issue for Michigan or not. And I don't know whether that's an issue for Michigan or not. And then the other thing that they brought up, which was an Achilles' heel to the English Language Arts High School curriculum, when we developed it, was that informational text is going to be substantially more important. And I know that when we had that discussion, NAEP had about 70% of its items in 12th grade as informational text, and Michigan was up around 20% or 30% in high school. So, I don't know how well that's covered in the years below, and whether it's covered well enough that that 20% and 30% isn't a problem in high school. And that would be it, but thank you for doing this.
I'd like to respond to just one piece of that, and that is, we have focused pretty heavily on informational text in the writing assessment, in the writing assessment. And for the, we actually do have a pretty strong correlation between the Common Core and our existing grade level content expectations, they're packaged differently. But one of the things that we are actually doing, thanks to Vince Dean, is that we will actually, for the content standards that are on the Common Core, that we do not have in our grade level content expectations, we're going to do something similar to what we did with the Future Core, when we had the grade level content expectations, that brought many of the content expectations down a couple of grade levels. We put them on the test, they didn't count for right now, but essentially giving people an idea, you know, how are you doing on these pieces that are new to us? So, just to give, we have anticipated that, and we will continue to work in that direction.
By the way, 170 score to be a plumber, I don't know if you went down the list, 41 to become a state superintendent.
Did you make it?
It's true.
No. Kath, please.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for this, it is done very clearly, so we can understand it. I got a call just this weekend from a teacher who teaches during the day at Highland Park, and now she teaches at Oakland Community College. And she is just appalled, she teaches composition, she's just appalled at the quality of the students that she's got at the community college, that they, she said, they don't know what, they don't know a comma, they don't know where to put a comma, they don't know grammar. And it struck a chord with me, because I've been pushing the teaching of grammar ever since I've been on the board, and a lot of people have been laughing at me and teasing me about it, but I-
Commas, that is pretty tricky.
Right. Somehow or other, we've got to get the schools to understand, they've got to do a better job of teaching writing skills, just basic grammar. I mean, they think it's not important. I still cringe when I hear report, people on Anchor People and Newscasters using the wrong, they don't use the objective, they use the wrong word, it just bugs me. But what also worries me about this is that it's such a stark change, that 66% of the, if I'm reading this right, 66% of the schools would not make AYP? Is that, is that what I-
Yes, that is, we anticipate that if achievement did not dramatically improve, by the 2011-12 school year, we would have 66% of the schools not making AYP.
Yeah, so, the schools have to do a lot better in this coming year than they've done.
Right, and it's also why I was saying, I didn't want to not delete the thinking that it wouldn't have to be decided the same time as this, but we would be, I would be recommending that we not have AYP as part of MISAS until we could get this caught up.
When I saw this, I thought, oh, MISAS, so when you said that, it really rang a bell. But I thought that John's question is the key, is the key question. What is the right bar?
Eileen told me that was the right question to ask, so-
Just the other, I gave him an answer and now he's like, oh.
It is, but the thing is, does, the ACT is college-ready for really a four-year college. You don't need the-
Well, that's what we need to figure out here.
Is that right? Is the, you don't need the-
College and career-ready.
For going to a community college, because it's mostly open enrollment, right?
The ACT methodology included both two-year and four-year institutions, so it, and in fact, there tend to be more community college students, so I would guess that you actually had an over-representation of community colleges in that study. So, just based on that, I would say, those ACT college-ready benchmarks are reflective of what's needed to succeed in community colleges, not just four-year universities.
And as the Smarter Balanced Consortium starts to work, Joseph's been sharing that there's going to be a number of thresholds, so it's not just one, it would be college and career-ready for a two-year college, for a four-year college, very similar to, Eileen, where you were going to go. So, I think it'll be more nuanced than just, are you there or not? There'll be different nuances to describe it.
And that depends on whether or not it ends up being convergent or divergent, and we don't know until we see the data. We will not know whether or not it's a divergent, you know, you have different thresholds for community college versus four-year universities, or maybe they are the same.
And if I can just add a technical note, the governing board chose 12 career paths that required some training, and of course, the military. So, it's community colleges, it's a one-year technical program, and when they, when that scale, if it's successful, because we're not even sure the equating studies will all work out, but, you know, our hope is that it will, and then I'm sure the Common Core folks, both of them will be using that as a guideline for how to shape what they're doing. There's no point, it's taken us millions and millions of dollars to get there, so.
Thank you. Nancy, and then Dan, and then Richard.
As I listened to John, I had a question pop into my head as well. You said you do not anticipate, and I'm thrilled to hear, that we will have wildly divergent situations occur. But playing devil's advocate, what if we did? What would be the process by which you would ascertain what's the correct way to go about correcting this, or adjusting to it, or alleviating it, however you want to put that? What would you do?
I think there are actually, I'm not quite sure whether you're talking about divergent situations across states or across different methodologies, or you're talking about divergent situations across community colleges versus four-
Methodologies is what he was referring to, and that's what occurred to me, is if we're in lockstep with one methodology, will we be able to unlock our step long enough to address that strong divergence?
Yes, the, I think the answer to that is, I just don't see how we would have strong divergence if we're using the same criteria as the outcome. For example, success in your first credit-bearing freshman course, it would be very odd to see that happen. In case it did happen, we would simply have to look at which is the best methodology and adopt the best methodology. And there would be plenty of academics who will want to tell us what's wrong with each individual methodology, and hopefully get to some kind of consensus about which is the appropriate methodology.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't so, such in lockstep with the, with the smarter, excuse me, smarter balanced, that we would find ourselves so locked into that that we couldn't step out of it for a moment and say, okay, how does that look? And that's why I'm pleased to hear that we're not.
I think, I think, one, smarter balance is not locked into a methodology at this point, and we'll be looking for best practices. And again, we'll be looking to Nagbe for some of the guidance, and wherever other, wherever else studies of this type have taken place, we'll be looking to those for guidance.
We're one of the lead states of the 30-some that are heading smart balance, so we're in a position of leadership there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dan, and Richard.
So, a quick comment, and then a few questions. Thank you for presenting this information, and frankly, this conversation's long overdue. I know that one of the, just to put a, kind of a real point on this, in Detroit, a group that's been working on education issues in Detroit, obviously, folks have been working on that for a long time. But we, based on MEAP, and I'll talk elementary school for a second, not even MEAP, but based on MEAP results, right, we thought we had elementary schools that were doing reasonably well. Not well, but they weren't awful. Proficiency rates were, you know, ranged from 30% to 60%, depending on grade, right? And traditionally, third and fourth graders were at a little higher level, and then it fell as you progressed through middle school. And then, the district took, had students participate in the NAEP exam, and the results were, I mean, left people devastated, I mean, just dismayed, right? Real kids, we're talking real, I mean, we're talking about lives of kids who thought, and their families thought, were on the progress, on a path toward college readiness. And to have that, to have that perception shattered in the way that it was, and to realize that perhaps the MEAP scores weren't telling us what we thought they were telling us, was an awful thing for us as a community, and we need to make sure that that doesn't continue to happen. So, this is a step in the right direction. So, thank you for bringing this to us. A couple of questions, or a few questions. One, basic one, would we continue to use the same four performance levels, ranging from not proficient to advanced, for the MME?
That's a discussion for the board to have. The board did decide maybe five years ago to change the labels of the performance levels, and that would, and I anticipate that with making this tied to college readiness, you may want to change what those labels mean. So, I think that is, that is something that the board would discuss and decide.
All right. Second, and give us the short answer, I don't need a long answer on this one, but I just don't have the benefit of having been at this table back when these decisions were made. What's the difference between the Smarter Balanced Consortium and the other? What is the other? And what's the distinction?
It's called PARC, it's the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Career. The, I'm going to give you three big differences. One is the number of states, 38 versus 27.
38 and smarter.
38 and smarter.
Not if it's adding up to more than 50 states.
Because there are several states that have their feet in both. Another difference was that we were offered an opportunity to be in a leadership role in the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium and not any other. And then the third big difference is the difference between computer adaptive assessment and computer-based assessment. Computer-based assessment is taking an existing assessment and giving it by computer, maybe enhancing it with some technology-enhanced items or something like that, but everyone gets the same test. A computer adaptive assessment is, you get an assessment that is adapted to each individual student's level of achievement, so that, for example, if you get, this is going on a little longer than you probably expected, but if you get an item, you get that item wrong, you're going to get a slightly easier item the next time, until you get into a range where you are just at the point of 50% probability of getting an item right versus wrong, so that you're just targeting right at where that student's achievement level is to find out really precisely where they are. That allows you to do a lot of things. One, give a shorter test if you just want to give one big score, or use that ability to give multiple scores within a subject. So, you have more options with the computer adaptive assessment. And that's one of the big reasons that we chose the Smarter Balanced Assessment.
All right, thank you. Last question. You shared that the failure, so, to go this route, the resulting kind of misalignment of AYP and MISAS, your take was that that would actually increase focus on subgroups. Would you explain to me in a little detail why that would be?
So, this is based on, how would we handle subgroups if AYP came out of MISAS? So, if AYP came out of MISAS, one of the things we had thought about was, okay, within a school, do you have a subgroup with a sufficient number of students to be stable? And it, take the achievement level of the highest achieving subgroup, and the achievement level of the lowest achieving subgroup, compare those, and use that to influence how things come out in the MISAS ranking. So, this would actually have not just, do you make AYP, do you not make AYP, it's going to influence the position of the school on that list across the board if they have a specific subgroup that is much more low achieving than another subgroup. And in that manner, it would actually place a greater emphasis on subgroups, because it would actually have an impact on every school, rather than just the schools that makes them not make AYP versus making AYP.
So, I'm struggling to follow you, let me ask this clarifying question. Is your, your belief that it would increase focus on subgroups a result, so is this, the score would change? My-
The school-level score would change.
Okay, all right.
And process clarification a little bit.
Yeah.
I was only getting that on the table, that if the board was to accept our recommendation to change these cut scores, it would have these implications. It doesn't mean it's the same decision, you may choose to leave AYP in. I would recommend you don't, because I think what Joseph has an example of a way to get at that is another way to get at it. And it takes away another piece, which is, there's, there are some unfairness issues related to AYP, and, well, I'll leave it at that. But it's not the same, it's a consequential decision of this, but the first step is kind of, do we want to, do we want to raise the scores? Richard, please.
I appreciate what's gone into this study, but I think it's considerably weakened by elements of smoke and mirrors. And the first is median annual earnings by educational attainment. I mean, the whole premise of the study is, things aren't continuing the same, so how can you assume that degrees will mean the same in terms of earnings in the future? There's an internal inconsistency there. When you compare the United States' college graduation rates by country, I see nine countries that are probably smaller than Michigan, are very homogenous in their society. That's not a meaningful comparison. You see, I see that, you know, college, percentage of adults with bachelor's degrees are higher by state, of course, the top one is District of Columbia. That's not a recommendation for the school system in the District of Columbia, okay? These elements weaken, because they seem to call into question some of the premises that are here. Now, I favor high standards, and I think the, much of the material that follows is very helpful. But a lot of this stuff seems to me to be a little bit of, on this order. I am shocked to learn that half of our students are below average. I mean, rhetorically, it sounds alarming, but statistically, it's true by definition. So, I would like to get beyond some of the stuff like comparing our graduation rates with Iceland, and focus on more meaningful material. I guess that's my concern as we look at this issue.
But you're appreciating the content of the meat of the recommendation.
On the whole, I do have some, I'm still studying that issue myself.
And I think, I mean, any case-making data such as presented is meant to encourage us that unless the world changes, better educated people do a lot better. And, yeah, it's apples and oranges when we look at Michigan versus other states versus countries versus countries, but the general tendency is that maybe we're not where we need to be.
Well-
Please just accept those casemakers for what they are, it's not the meat of what we're discussing today, I guess.
But that's, that very statement is question begging, because, of course, better educated people will do better. We've defined the people who do better as better educated. You see, that's the que, what does it mean to be better educated? That's the meat, that's the heart of the issue.
We're going to take those two slides out next time.
Go ahead.
Because I, to both points, really, I think, if I could, more in lay terms, I mean, I'm not a psychometrician as Joseph is, but it's this issue of, kind of Dan touched on it, that parents believe their kids are ready, because we have proficiency scores that aren't real. And then, once we make them real, yes, admitted, if the kids are going to do the same on the test one way or the other, it's just that the adults, like me, won't be fooling ourselves that 80% of, I mean, these affect us too. Statewide, we won't have the numbers that maybe we would like to be able to say we had in terms of proficient. So, it'll be a lower number, but it'll be a college-ready, career-ready number. And I think you're making a good point, though, in some ways, we could- In some ways, we could confuse the argument, or not crystallize it maybe if we had some of those other factors in there. Good point. Eileen, please.
I suspect that this, this presentation may survive beyond these, this moment. And so what I would suggest, when the board presented its May 2010 study on why it was important to take a look at cost-effective efficiencies in education and people, people success, one of the statistics that was given in there was the comparison between states for median income and bachelor's degrees. And even that, I'm told, is suspect, and the data's changed a tremendous amount in the last five years for Michigan. But something like that, rather than the OECD comparisons, that they're, they're valid, but they're not compelling for what we face. And I wouldn't want to have this go out in public relations and have us be looking as if we're basing it on OECD stuff, because it's not really what we're talking about.
Good point. Well, this, this is kind of a first cast.
When do you expect to bring this back to us to vote on?
This afternoon.
Lunch?
No, that, that agenda, we can decide that, you know. It, it depends, you know, I'd sleep on this a bit, and in agenda planning, we could see, is there enough information, enough feedback for a closer decision, you know? I think because of the 11, 12, we've got some time in there. You know, but I think if it did crystallize and seemed to be, okay, we want to at least move in that direction, then some of these other questions about my SAS, some of these other questions about labeling, you know, we could deal with subsequent to that. So, but that would be, you know, up to the board. We, we have, we've left a little bit of time on this on purpose, right? But I think in agenda planning and maybe trying to get a sense of, board comfortable with it, what more might we need before we make a decision, you know, that, and you're going to get feedback. Although, you know, I think most people even represented here with different groups, they know. I mean, I tested this out with what I'm calling speeches the last three years. You see a lot of nodding in the audience when you say, you know, "Go to college-ready, go to our," what do we call that, Marty, on the...
College career-ready.
College, but we had a, we had a label for it for a while, that, at any rate, in effect, it was saying, you know, you might say you're at 80 percent, but if, if 20 percent, according to the ACT on those issues, are, are college and career-ready, then, then there's a, there's a gap. And we don't want to keep fooling ourselves in that. And I think people, there's also a thing, we talked in-house about, you know, pulling the Band-Aid off all at once, you know, and, and saying, "This is it," and, and then getting ready for the next few years where we can show improvement. I believe the schools will. I do think that, as I said, my daughter is a teacher. I think if, if she believes that, with no malice, but genuinely believes, "We're doing okay. These kids are going to be ready for the work world or the college world," and not realizing where they may really be in her high school, that's a detriment to her as a teacher. So I mean, but these are, you know, we have some time. It could be as early as next month, it could be down the road, you know? That's, we could do this piecemeal. We could do that piece, and some of these other questions subsequent to that. Does that sound right to you guys? Or Joseph, correct me if I'm wrong, you're welcome to.
No, that sounds right.
Well, how about John?
I have a suggestion on where we are. I mean, given the hour, it's noon, and there's lots of people here who clearly want to talk at some point, and we have a potential snowstorm. I guess the, the next item, I was hoping, and certainly as we look ahead, that we could look at our strategies and priorities and really talk about how are we getting them done? Spend some time on some of the key pieces of our strategic agenda, things we know are underway, get better sense of timing and process like the Common Core standards, but talk more about the heavier lifts that we might need to be contributing to on the turnaround school effort, the whole ongoing teacher professional support system, credentialing, evaluation. So I guess, I feel like we're going to short-change that probably anytime we do it today. So my recommendation would be we try to integrate those items into our planning and our next meeting in some way, if you will, and then maybe, maybe we could even take a short lunch and come back for what we need to do. I, I mean, we've got still a bunch of business to take care of and discussion to have. That would be my proposal.
I would recommend that we give these people an opportunity to speak before lunch.
Okay, I certainly support that very strongly.
We do that, because there is a storm. We typically do this at 1:30, but we're going to organize these as they came in, and we'll ask some folks. Thanks, Joseph and Sally, by the way.
Thank you so much.
And we'll invite you, Bert will explain some of the protocols. So please, our, our first guest, you could just do them in the order that you receive them.
These are, these are the three sheets that I have in this order, Mary Frances Williams. If you'll come to the table. After her will be France, Sandra Hines, and after that, Marguerite Maddox and Joel.
Add a few more, Nancy?
Probably.
Sure, yeah. We should go to regular meeting.